February supervisors meeting. This time I'll call the meeting to order and invite you to join the board as we stand and pledge the flag. Pledge the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time we'll have the roll call.
Jerry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerby.
Here.
David Lineback.
Here.
Michael Reyer.
Here.
Elizabeth Pedder.
Here.
Carol Martin.
Okay, we'll have our community open session. This is a time where you have the agenda. If there's any items you want to talk to us about before we take action, that's what this time's for. I'll limit you to four minutes each, and who wants to go first? Okay.
Okay, I would urge Breck Laxton citizens to be in the video of the Board of Supervisors in the organization meeting of January 4, 2016, paying particular attention to Mr. Long's comments depriving the practice of the BOS member serving on another township entity. Apparently, he has not followed his own statement as he now serves on two entities. It is also interesting to view the video of January 4, 2016, and January 12, 2016. We went from the community input comment section to where we are today. Initially, the public was invited to do a four-minute session each, and if time allowed and needed, perhaps a second round would be offered, no longer offered. Secondly, after community input, the chair invited Board of Supervisors to respond if they wished to. Never happens, or rarely happens anymore in the future. Item three, according to Mr. Zerby, his recollection was only comments were to be made from the public, no response was necessary years ago. It is now 2018, not years ago. Item four, now comments are responded to with a very trite comment like duly noted and/or thank you. Item five, yet members of the BOS have stated comments allegedly made by other citizens not attending a meeting and have actually responded to those alleged absentee comments at Board of Supervisor meeting. Again, lack of poor leadership or lack of leadership seems to be evident. Cherry-picking of responses is evident. We will do whatever we want, and citizenry be damned. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have comments.
Okay, that concludes our new session. Any more to comment?
Ms. Bees, you have come here repeatedly with so many negative things. Is there anything in the last two years that suited your fancy?
I think your tone is inappropriate for this, but that's okay. You're in the meeting, and yes, I have come to not only this meeting, but other meetings as well, and I've spoken out positively about a variety of things. I have.
You know, unfortunately, I've been an elected official for just, I don't know, thirty years now. The people want me here. They want me to speak for them. You know, I really don't believe you understand what it takes to run a township.
Is this going to be a lecture? And again, you speak for some of the people, the people that voted for you. You don't speak for everyone in the township.
I speak for the majority of the people. That much I know.
You speak for the majority of the people that voted that vote. We can go back and forth.
We can consider it like we used to with your neighbor till midnight.
I don't even know who you're referring to.
Yes, you do.
No, I don't.
Yes, you do.
I have no clue what you're talking about.
Well, I'm not done.
Yeah.
What is it that doesn't suit you? What's your agenda?
I have no agenda. I just feel that I don't appreciate the way things are being run. I don't appreciate some of the changes that have occurred. I do not appreciate the fact that people say one thing and then change and do other things. I just don't think that that's the way to run the township.
You know, that's why people vote. If you like change, you vote for change.
I do.
I don't want to get into this. We could be equal hours.
We can both sit there.
I suggest, I'm the next one coming up for election. Why don't you run against me? We'll see who wins.
I work full-time. I really kind of do that.
You work full-time?
Yes, I do. And I'm often working people, so therefore my availability means otherwise I certainly would vote. So I appreciate the suggestion, I really do, but I kind of, I don't think I'd serve the township for, when I retire to get this going.
I'm very disappointed.
And I'd like to serve too.
I used to work too, and I worked in. I still was able to put in my time for the township, to be a little excuse.
Well, perhaps you have a different job than I do.
Well, unfortunately, I know what you do. I know where you've been. I've heard comments, so...
I hope this is not going to be a personal attack.
Are you attacking her?
No, I'm not.
I hope it's not going to be an attack.
Sure you are. You're saying you heard comments about Cindy. So you're attacking her.
No, I'm not attacking her.
Sure you are.
Hey, she's a beautiful woman, so I'm attacking her.
Now, you're really getting with that.
Yeah.
And I don't know what your goal is either.
Okay.
You know, the people vote. That's where it all boils down to. It doesn't come down to a handful, six individuals trying to run the township.
X amount of people vote on any given day for X amount of people. That's the reality of it. That's the data.
Well, the elections decide who sits here, and the thing is, you keep hammering at Jerry. Jerry spent close to thirty years sitting on planning commissions, zoning hearing boards, all different kind of, well, not elected positions like me, but appointed. He put in a lot of time for this township. And then you refer, and you just did tonight again, to that, the present-day board, and we have Mr. Lineback sitting there. You're including him in that statement. He's done nothing. I mean, he's the newcomer, and why do you have to include him?
I addressed my comments on the present-day board and the present-day audience because today is the present. I did not hammer anyone. I simply quoted what Mr. Long said, and that's available in the archives via YouTube of the Breck Knott Township meetings of January 4th and the 12th I quoted from 2016. The board is the board. They choose to operate as a board, and that's the way it is. I'm not attacking, hammering, or simply quoting.
Well, all I know is this continues, we're going to get in some real matches in the future. And don't think I'm afraid of you or that he's a recruitment senior. That doesn't bother me one bit.
I don't think that, I don't think that at all.
Okay, let me make a comment. I appreciate you speaking up.
And the snickering has to stop. Last meeting, the sneaker.
Yeah, you may ask the question.
You made, you did make some comments and stuff that kind of made me wonder if you didn't really make anything real clear, like you said, there seems to be an agenda. I mean, what are you seeing? As a new member here, it did raise a little bit of concern for me because I don't want to be in the middle of some ulterior agenda that's going on, so, you know, if you could point out what you're seeing or...
I prefer, I would prefer to prepare a statement about that for a future meeting. Or do you want to call me? You happy to have that conversation recorded?
It's just, you know, not clear to me what you're talking about.
Well, I was just going to say, I hear you, and yes, it is noted, but if you go back and you do look at the YouTube, you'll find out that you're incorrect. You were saying I said things I never said, and so, go look at it.
I did.
Okay, but it's very clear. I never said that I had a problem with a supervisor serving on a board, and the video is very clear that I'm asked, oh, Melvin Boyd said, oh, so you have a problem with a supervisor serving on the sewer authority? And I said, yes. And that's as clear, that's as clear as day right there in the tape.
I reviewed the tapes as well. That's all I did.
I'd ask all of you to go back and review it because you're going to find out that you misrepresented some information. That's my opinion.
Okay.
And so I choose not to respond to you because I feel it would just be an endless circle of back and forth, and sometimes, you know, it takes more strength to be quiet than it does to elaborate on.
Absolutely, I agree.
You named some years or the dates of the tape to repeat those.
Yeah, they were both in January of 2016. I believe before, then the 12th or 16th, I believe before.
Okay, can we move on? Okay. You have the copy of the minutes from last month from your packet, January 9.
I have reviewed the minutes, and the motion accepted the minutes as presented.
And I second it.
Okay, the motion, the motion was made to accept the minutes as presented. It was seconded. There was a favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, you have a copy of the bills. I guess last week, last month, there was a comment about the excessive PP&amp;L charge.
Oh, yes, we discovered, the bill is high again this month, but we discovered that someone had turned on the baseboard heat, which has now been turned off, and I looked at the daily usage, and it's, it's way, way down now, so we corrected that.
Now, I see we get a light fund bill every month.
That's for just the streetlights.
The streetlights?
Yes.
For about $5,000, so...
Yes.
Times 12, that's $60,000 a year.
Yes.
Does PP&amp;L offer any incentives or rebates or credits to switch over to LED lights?
It would cost to switch to LED lights. You can switch to LED lights at times. They offer some discounts. Right now, I don't know if there's anything active, but when I see that again, we can start looking at that.
See, even if it costs something, if you kept the rates the same until they paid off and the bulbs...
Right.
I mean, I don't see a tremendous reduction in costs with LEDs, you know, like 10% or 90% reduction.
We can certainly look at it. There's absolutely no cost to looking at it.
Thank you for the streetlight bills.
Yeah. The streetlight bills, for those of you who live in developments with streetlights, when you see that there's a light out, call the township, even if you don't live in that development, you see, because we get charged for that, if it's on or off. So, we want to make sure they're on, because I've already traveled through the township at night, five and a half a dozen, you know. Let Carol know.
When I see them, I let them. Yep, you do.
Just to make a comment, in our development, we have the lights that are on the lawn, and some people have rewired them, put a different bulb in, and have maybe a switch in their house, and they turn the light off. Thinking that they're saving electricity. So that's why there might be some of them off.
No, those in your development are not included in the streetlights.
Uh-huh.
They are on each individual lot, electricity. They are not included in the streetlights. Yeah.
Which is, explains why the lower level, lower-end development had them all taken out, they just didn't want that.
Yeah, that's because they're not on, yeah. Your development is different.
We're talking about those in the big poles that you see scattered.
Are the rates going to stay the same, like, say, three hours a year?
At the moment, they're staying the same, yeah. In order for us to, there's no additional at this point. They're not going up, if that's what you mean, no. We're able to keep them the same. PP&amp;L hasn't adjusted. PP&amp;L for streetlights has a fee schedule for streetlights. It's different than electric to homes and how those rates are. There's an actual, it's a rental fee. It's not really going on how much electric those lights use, and they look at daylight savings and the whole thing, and it's a per month, per light fee for most of the, in the developments anyway, that's the way it works, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
I had a question on that handheld blower yet. That one that was rendered under Eagle Randall?
That would be a band-aid.
The handheld blower.
Didn't we rent it?
Yeah.
No, we bought it.
Okay, I was going to say, it seems like a law for rental.
No, no, we weren't. We bought that, yeah.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the bills in the amount of $70,014.73.
I second that.
Okay, we had a motion, and it was second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have our roadmaster's report. And I guess you're looking for some direction on the projects that you have listed in the...
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to try and, you know, get moving on all the roadwork I'd like to get done this year, and I think everybody should have a list of everything that I want to get done now. All the, all the oil and chip that would be done this year will go through the co-op program with all the other municipalities, so that everybody, we get a lower price for bidding out a bulk amount of work altogether. And the line painting will go through there. And then on, I'd like to do the overlay like I had planned on East Black Creek Road to finish that one off from the base repair and oil and chip that we got done last year. And then last but not least, on Oakland Drive from East Maple Grove Road to Boulder Hill Road, I know I had previously stated that I wanted to just do base repair and oil and chip it this year, but I went out and re-looked over the road here about a month ago, and the base repair is a little more extensive than I thought it would be. And the steps I'd like to take on that is, Earl Township had done the same thing on one of their roads. They went in and they spread three inches of stone over top of the entire road, and then milled everything together so that you had a six, eight-inch good stone base underneath of your road, and then they went and put a base layer of pavement on it, and then the following year, well, they had topped it the same year, but due to budget reasons, we have to hold the topping off until 2019. And I, from numbers, I called around, got numbers, and I believe I'd be pretty close in the price. I don't think, in the long run, we're going to get a better project for spending just a little bit more. I'm afraid that the base repair, it's just, it's too extensive. There's so much on that road. It looked like a checkered board until we were done. So, anyway, when we got volunteered also this year to lead the co-op, so, I guess that's...
I appreciate you taking the lead there.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, I think the overlay, I agree with you on Oakland Drive, that's all the PP&amp;L traffic stuff, and plus they're contributing a substantial portion of funds. And the Black Creek Road is finishing, obviously, the last year's project.
Right.
I do want to question you on some of the tar and chipping.
Okay.
Again, don't take this wrong, don't just throw a lot at us. Silver Hill Road?
Yes.
That, I thought a year ago, I was under pressure that road was like so far gone that it needs to be reclaimed, and now you're basically proposing maybe just doing a double tar and chip. I drove there today, and it's just real narrow at some places, and it's like that road needs a lot more than a double tar and chip, and I'm concerned that maybe we're just wasting that, and we really should be widening the road and doing a real reclaiming, and if it has to be reclaimed and gravel for a couple of years until we can overlay it, I'm curious what the road count, the traffic count of that road is.
Right, it's, I haven't done it, but I, fifty or less cars.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if the 25,000, 26,000 is really the best use of a double tar and chip, and if that money instead was used to widen, remill it. There's, there's boulders coming up through the road, I mean, you've driven it, there's, the swales each side aren't prepared. Someone just told me today that they won that road, and a truck came the other way, and they got over and they got off the road, and if they wouldn't have pulled it dry, they would have got stopped.
Yeah, it's very narrow.
It's, so I really, I want to hear the other members' opinion on each of these because I know our estate in pass that he thinks tar and tar and chip and all of these are good comments, but I just question sometimes whether we're doing the right thing, and I'd like to hear comments from you as well.
It's definitely in bad shape, and it is small. I drove through there last week, and it's really, I don't know how long the tar and chip will last, or if it will help it any. But to put that on, and how long would it go to?
The reason I'd like to do the double oil and chip one, it's, it's really, it's a band-aid. It's to hold it together. Doing a double on that road probably lasts, give us another ten years on it. Now, it's not going to improve the profile, it won't really improve anything, but it will hold the road together long enough.
Will it last a decade?
I think it will, yeah. That road hardly sees any traffic. I think it sees more horse and buggies than it does cars. But if we don't do something to try and band-aid it together to where we can save up money, where we can do reclaim it and rebuild the whole road, we'll lose it completely, and you said, you know, mill it up or put stone over top of it and leave it in stone for a couple of years. I don't know how we'd plow that then. If the stone's not frozen, we'd peel that stone right up when we plow it.
There are a lot of roads, gravel in other parts of the state that they plow, and they're...
I just, I just, that road needs to be rebuilt, not just topped, and it needs to be tiled on each side, and it needs to be widened, and it needs to be, you know, fixed, and this is just a, it's going to stay narrow, it's going to be the same problem. You're not, you know, there's bumps, there's depressions, there's, all you're doing is simply putting a coat over top of it, you know. I, I wonder if we, I mean, I don't see a problem with it becoming a gravel road if we can't afford to overlay it for a couple of years. There's, the other thing that hurts it is you've got seal wheel tractors running up and down. The Zerman has a farm up at the turn, and he has a farm down at the end, and so, let it be gravel. He can run on gravel, he's not going to hurt it. Then you've got Brubaker up at the other end, he's driving down through to feed cattle. They're running on that road. It's, I, I'm...
Did you ever get numbers to redo it?
To reclaim that road the whole way, widen it, you know, I mean, if we're going to do it, widen it to at least 18 foot wide, and it's, what, 16ths, and put some places a lot narrower than that, I mean, I think you're talking in a range of a million dollars.
Yeah, to over that is...
Yeah, well, with one base coat, and then to top it, I mean, your miles, roads, what is it, a mile and a quarter long, pave a mile and a quarter, I mean, just to top it, you're looking probably for $500,000. Another base, you're looking at another probably three. That's just for the blacktop, let alone all the dirt work and stone you'd have to put into it. I mean, you're looking, starting at a million just to, just to do that.
Paul, have you heard me? You heard Paul? You're part of us.
Silver Hill Road has been probably our worst road that I can remember for 30 years. It hasn't changed much. I'm not a big oil and chip man, you know that. That's the reason we bought the tar buggy, the new one, years ago. Other townships, a lot of them don't even use a tar buggy because it's hard work, and they don't want to do it. They get into this oil and chip program, now, Silver Hill Road is not a good one, but their oil and chip in roads, a lot of times it's 70, 80% of the road don't even need it, the parts that aren't coming apart. And here we have, I don't know how many years back, oh, I'm going to guess 10, between Bridge Road and down to Hubers, we took the tar buggy and ran two loads a day, and we put that in pretty decent shape. We saved that through there. There were some bad, bad spots. I always imagined the tar buggy is enough to keep your roads in shape, but I don't know. The thing is with that road, how many years do you go? It's been 30 years. That's the worst road in the township, but we simply can't afford to redo that road. He's right, it's a million-dollar project. There's no question about it.
What's your thoughts of making it wider and leaving it gravel?
We made some wider by hand, ourselves.
We had widened the sections too.
Yeah, we widened some ourselves.
Put a, no truck track in.
Oh, boy. With the, with the...
I mean, no truck, I mean, no two truck, no...
I don't think there's that much to begin with.
Okay, well then...
You know, Dequory was talking about using it at one point to get in the backside of Dequory. The road ends at Dequory, at the fence, but they, they gave up that idea because they'd have had that road busted up in a day or two. That road is the worst that we've gotten. The next one is 5.0, down to the Condi, not the Condi, sorry, township. But to skin patch the worst areas with our tar buggy, I know it's a lot of work, to widen where you have to, where you're near, we, how much money you want to put into something that only gets 50 cars a day?
Well, that's my question, Dave.
Well, what's interesting about that road is, and my wife and I use it all the time, it was redone, pretty much resurfaced in, what, around 1994 or '05 or '06 somewhere. I remember driving down that road, you could zip right down, no problem.
Twenty years ago.
Within a couple of years, it was just like it is now. It didn't take very long for it all to...
Yeah, well, the base isn't there.
The water and the fields gets on it, and there's no drainage, and...
And down at the creek there.
Yeah, it's just, it doesn't last very long, so whatever you have to do, it's got to be...
In '94 or '95, I don't think it was an overlay. That was just oil and chip.
No, it was real, it was an overlay, I think, because it was real smooth. There was no stones kicking up on your car.
Well, you know, there's been a lot happened since that...
Right, I know, and I'm just saying, but even after that, it wasn't more than four or five years later that it was, you had to slow down because it got real bumpy, you know. It wasn't smooth anymore.
Well, it did have so many depressions and bumps, and, so the question is, are we throwing money away to put a double coat of tar and chip?
Well, you know how I feel about it, I'm chipping to the beginning of it, but I, there's another one up there, I'd like to speak about it before you.
Sure, yeah. Well, no, I'm still on Silver Hill Road, because I drove up there this afternoon, and there was a forklift coming down the road, and I pretty much stopped to let a forklift pass, and they're only four foot wide. There's, it's too narrow. I just, I just think to go ahead and tar and chip it the way it is, it's like they'll say, what the purpose of that, you know? If you're going to spend money, make it wider. Okay. But, other one?
Long lane.
The reason to want oil and chip long lane, your reason?
You can see, when you look at the blacktop, all the fines are coming out of that blacktop. The top of the blacktop is drying out, and we're getting potholes on it, and you have to keep that surface, and you have to put that oil on it to keep that surface from drying out, and all the fines falling out, and it prevents from getting potholes and being out there and doing pothole repair all the time. And it's, I mean, it's, you can see it, it's the whole road. When you go out there and look at it real close, you can see all the fines are coming out.
I'm still wondering if the blacktop that was used on that road was of quality. That's, that's out of my...
And that, that's, that's out of my hands.
And I realize that, but it wasn't long before that road, especially where you're coming down from the park of the entrance and you come down into the first turn for the second.
Yeah, from Warren Weaver, it's where it's-
It sloughed, that road sloughed. It actually slid. You can see where it stretches.
Yeah.
It shouldn't have done that. I'm wondering if, what-
Well, didn't they get overlaid and then the bridge got closed and then it got all that heavy traffic over too?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
See, I thought that, I thought Long Lane is not bad. You come in off of Buzzard Valley Road until you get down past white by Warren Weaver's.
Which, which one is Warren Weaver?
The second one, the stone base.
Okay.
Block base. And then from down on there, it's, it's showing, you know, the cracks and stuff.
You probably get your best, best value out of the tar chip if you capture it before it's, it's over.
Well, I, but the, I think the hot tar that you use with the tar buggy, can you hire a crew in with six, eight guys that do their own flagging, that actually do the hot tar? I mean, you just have the buggy and, uh, you know, you're only, you only have three guys. Can, can you hire people to come in and, and?
Do spots?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a company that comes in there and does it. Uh, for an eight hour day, it's ten thousand dollars.
They have their order version.
Yeah, right, okay. The more, the better would go, you know?
Not necessarily. I took people out there that were supposed to help us and they stood there and they didn't even have a hot, they weren't a shoulder.
I mean, I, I, I can see the tar and chip down from, from maybe the park down through, but then again, uh, I, I think I agree. It seems sometimes like seventy, eighty percent of the road don't need it. You can cover the whole road just for a couple of sections, but what do you do?
Yeah.
I mean, you just, you just drive, you, I mean, you physically get out and really look at the blacktop.
Well, I, I remember-
I mean, you gotta, you know, like-
I see that the T in the blacktop, you, you physically have to get out and you gotta look at it. And you can see it's drying out on the top and all the fines are coming out. And when you see that, that's your first sign, okay, we're gonna start getting potholes in this road soon because that's, you know, one, you know how it works. Once things start to unravel, it just continues and continues. And, and then, and then you get potholes and, I mean, it's, you can see that. You, you pay attention to the black and you can just see it. All the fines are coming out. The coarse stones starting to show, you know.
Some of the roads are not real good. I mean, Staver Road, Orchard Road, there's sections where it's, it's a dibbit.
They're not, they're not good, but, um, I don't have it in the road plan to overlay it next year. And this is to prevent us from constantly going out and doing pothole repairing and constantly going out with the buggies so that we can clean ditches and, and do base repair and, and do other things on the roads. Um, I, you know, uh, it's, it's to hold them together to prevent, it's preventive maintenance, it's to prevent us from constantly being out there, spending money, doing potholes and doing this, to, to keep the road and it, try to keep it from getting worse than what it is now.
Well, yeah, it's just, I, I know, it's costing seventy-seven thousand. And then, you know, it doesn't save us money in the long run because we don't have it then when we, when we do need to overlay it. Um, I just wonder if Orchard Road and Staver Road, there's sections where there ought to be base repair, there ought to be cut, you know, dug out and because there's sections that, that is, you know, coming apart right along the road. It's just, uh, you're still gonna have water sitting in them, in them depressed areas.
Right.
Well, I, I can see once over it because the, Urks County did part of that and I think you ought to do that. Um, and, you know, if it's the lesser of two evils and we gotta do it, I guess we gotta do it. But, you know, we've been going along, I know Art's opinion and I, I think I, I see his side of the picture. And, yeah, we keep doing it, but I don't see it. I, I've seen him on Bull Hill Road, you know. It, it seems like when they, when they go through, why don't they do a finer stone? Because they go with it.
It's not Penn Dot approved.
Because either they crush the stone and it becomes dust and it stays there and, and becomes part of the surface, or it rolls off to the side and, and everyone's sweeping off their driveways and out of their yards and, and, uh, see, I mean, it seems that if you go with stone sand, with a light coating of stone sand, you'd have better, better job.
We're, we're working, we're working on trying to, see, you know, a lot of times we use liquid fuels for this type of work. And, uh, we're looking to get a quarter inch stone approved. And it hasn't passed yet, but they're letting us do what they call a trial run this year. So a lot more challenges. It's a doing the quarter inch. Right now they're, we're only allowed to use half inch. Uh, and, uh, the, the quarter inch is, it's pretty nice. And that's what we use when we do our, our skin patching and stuff with the tar buggy. We use quarter inch and-
And that's why it does look better. I can just see where you done it.
Yeah, so, like I said, we're doing a trial run this year. We've been work, uh, all the townships in the co-op have been working with, with Penn Dot to try and get that approved for liquid fuels money. And I think we're, we're, I, I think by next year that will be approved. We will be able to use a finer stone. But as of right now, we're not allowed to unless we pay for it out of general funds. And then, and then, uh, this, this year, uh, you know, we're gonna get, I wanna get the roads all swept a few weeks after the oil and chip is done so that all the loose stones, the majority of them should be picked up and disposed of and not in people's yards and driveways and stuff. But it's gonna, I'd have to leave, I'd have to leave it sit two, three weeks before we're allowed to sweep it.
There's a difference today in the oil and chipping process of what it was back when I was first started working on roads back in the sixties. You got real oil today. You got RC two fifty. You got an oil that has some binding compound to it. But no, the government had to take away, use part for jet fuel, gave us the worst. Then they had to take away, find out a good plastic product, really has us down to the bottom of the barrel. But it's still the best you can get compared to what they use in the oil and chipping program. And that's why we're at where we're at today. Government takes this stuff away from you and expects you to do a better job with what's left. And they don't really care. We're stuck here. We gotta use with what we've got. And it's a shame we don't have what we had years ago. It's no Roadmaster's Hall, it's no Township Hall, it's just a, the product quality is getting poor. It's, it's getting worse.
And more money.
And more money.
Wrapping the blacktop in it more so you get recycled blacktop versus virgin.
I do not like what they use today.
What do you suggest? What do I do?
Well, if the tar chip lasts for ten years, Long Lane, it's not in that bad shape. When we killed it last time, I went through there, it's not full of potholes and stuff. Same with Wensel Road, Silver Hill and Orchard. I haven't been on Staver in a while, but Silver Hill and Orchard are, I don't know if you're gonna help them too much with tar and chip.
It, like I said, it's just, it'll prevent them from getting worse. Now, I know they're bad and they have their, they need a base repair and, and overlaying, but it'll prevent them from getting any worse until we get to the point that we can do the base repair.
What's the difference between the double?
The double, the double, you'll get ten-
Two layers?
It's two layers. So they'll, they'll come in, they'll do a layer, um, tar with half inch stone on, and then they'll come back and they'll do another layer of tar. And, uh, I'm gonna get them to do a quarter inch on top so that it's not such a, it's not such a rough surface. And look, it's a better appeal of, uh, you know, Black Creek Development off of East Black Creek Road. Uh, Conarvan Township just did that development two years ago and it, it looks, it looks good. Um, it, it, it's a better product. And we'll get roughly, probably ten years out of that. Uh, the single layer, they say about seven, five to seven years is how long you get out of it. Uh, depending, depends on your truck traffic and the shape of the road and everything else.
What year was, uh, Beaumont Road, I don't remember.
A section of it was last year.
By the great earlier section.
Which earlier section?
Like from, um, down past Crane and Nelson Gate and, and the end of, well, from like, from Staver Road down through, past, past the shade, the good screen, the, the shade and down through, past Orchard Road.
Oh, gee.
I looked it up.
And you've got that direction, yeah. Because the reason I say that, when I came out of Staver Road, wanted to do Beaumont Road.
Two thousand and seven.
Beaumont was all cracked up. Now, when I drove up six twenty-five up towards the hill, you can see where there's, I guess the state had put oil down following the crack.
Crack seal.
Yeah.
I had that in my budget.
It looks like, it looks like Beaumont Road needs crack sealing.
And we're gonna, I had that, I was gonna, I'm teaming up with East Earl and we're gonna do some, it's rubberized crack sealing. It's, those cracks over there, they're, they're stress cracks. They're just where the blacktop tends to move. You put that rubberized crack sealing in there, seals the crack up, keeps the water from getting down into your base, but it still allows the crack to move because it, it's just where, that's just a stress point there. It's like concrete, you know? Uh, but that's something I had budgeted for this, to do this year.
When, when's the deadline in the Silver Hill Road, is it, or?
Friday.
It has to be done tonight.
Well...
I don't have a problem trying in Orchard Road, Staver Road, West Side Road, but you see, I, I, I'm really concerned about putting that money into Silver Hill Road and still it's too narrow. It's gonna be a problem. I'm not gonna fix it. I'm just holding together for a while. Still gotta, it's gotta be redone. It's gotta be made wider. Um, I, I see that road made, you know, if it's made wider and left gravel, it'd be a big improvement over what it is today. And a big improvement over putting double tar and chip on it.
I make sure all, whoever good members of the residents make that call me.
Well, I know some of them that drive their steel wheel tractors on there shouldn't be calling anybody.
And they won't be. But there are several, quite, quite a few houses back in there, dude.
But you know what? As I said earlier, that road has been the worst one for thirty years. Where were them houses thirty years ago?
Probably not there.
They weren't there. Did they not build on a road they knew the condition?
No, I, I don't, no, I didn't, I didn't grow up in this township. I don't know what that road was like thirty years, but the general impression I get from the residents is that it was ten times better than what it is twenty years ago. Like, twenty years ago, them houses weren't there.
You're talking about the ones up the dead end?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they come across Bridge Road, so they're, they're not traveling much now.
I can't speak for the residents that live in there, but if I live up there, I'd rather leave it the way it is than that dirt road.
You know what happens every time you fix, you know what happens every time you fix up a road and you overlay it?
More traffic and-
And what happens? You get more phone calls from the residents. They're now driving too fast. You made a racetrack. But, yeah.
Yeah. I, I had a few from the residents' roles since we overlaid it and malls and-
They complain that you made it too nice.
Yeah. So...
The Litter Hill Road, good, dirt road, my house though.
Well, I'm not impressed with the tar and chip on Bull Hill Road because it, it still bumps and bangs and trailers driving past and they go across with the pipes put across and they bang and bang. So the tar and chip did nothing.
But it's not designed to take the bombshell. It is just to hold the road together.
You know, it's supposed to last seven years. When Iskakali Code did, gave it school road below my place from the bridge to Stone Hill Road, it didn't make one year. It was awful.
And they should have had the contractor come back and do it because there was the wrong oil mixture.
And it goes in the amount of traffic. A lot of people don't realize how many people now use game and school road to come up across the border. There never used to be that amount of traffic. But we overlaid our road. Now they done theirs. And all of the heavier truck traffic coming off of the turnpike at two twenty-two to Lipper's Components, I guess that's what it's still called, all them trucks back and forth, right there. They don't go up to Stone Hill Road and make that hard turn.
Yeah.
But it didn't last a year. Okay?
Well, we're hearing all kinds of numbers because I had received information that a tar and chip can last three to five years. An overlay can last twelve years. And then if you tar and chip a couple times, you can get another, you tar and chip it twice, you can get another six years, six to eight years. So you, and then you overlay it. So it's like every twenty years, you basically need to overlay. And yet, you know, we're trying to get more and more years out of roads that are continuing to tar and chip and tar and chip. And it's, it's not taking, it's not giving the crown back on the road. It's not taking the, the low spots out so you have water sitting on it. And, uh, I was told up on, um, Yellow Hill Road in front of Amos Colt, we talked to the quarry because apparently there, it's, it's, it's a reset, it's recessed and there's water sitting on the road from quarry trucks. And, um, someone hit that hydroplane and, uh, just tell me about it. So make a note to check that out. Because the quarry shares some responsibility for that.
I think, I think it's their full responsibility as far as I know. I mean, we'd go out and do potholes if it seemed to show up. But as far as I know, they're responsible from Yellow Hill from their entrance all the way down to Oakland and Oakland out to Maple, East Maple Grove and six twenty-five.
Someone hit that hydroplane recently.
Well...
What do you think, Art?
You know how I feel about oil and chipping at the beginning?
Well, I know, but I'm gonna need to get off the, uh, off this subject and move on.
I am the kind of person, use that tar buggy, save that money, and then you save up a year or two or three, and then you have money to overlay a road or two.
Well, we could save twenty-six thousand dollars by leaving Silver Hill another year and see what happens. If it continues to fall apart, it needs to be widened.
Here's the thing. Are any of the roads in that bad a shape that there are major safety issues?
Well, when they have water setting, see, that tar and chip's not gonna help that.
Orchard probably has, definitely has some stuff. We need to do a lot of ditch cleaning.
Well, that's, that's beyond this.
But, um, I mean, ends up faster traveling, I can't-
Well, yeah, and that's-
If you're following the speed limit, I mean, I drive a long time and I don't have any issues. Uh, I mean, Staver has some water issues. They all have a little bit of water issues and icing over in the winter, but, I mean, but they don't, we, we try not to let them get to be hazards. We go out and fill the potholes in and everything else so that they're not hazards, but the oil and chip helps prevent that.
Something like the rut fill and the depressions.
Well, that's another, you know, you'd spend mon, it's the same thing. You're spending more money.
The base is what's given out.
Right, the base is what's given out.
So the tar and chip isn't gonna help. That's, that's not much, much challenge.
It's gonna help keep the road from getting worse. You know, I just, you know, we have, you know, I forget how many roads, a hundred roads in a ten- you know, I forget how many roads, a hundred roads in the township or whatever, and probably seventy of them could use an overlay right now. And thirty of them are good. So, you know, not all of them are gonna be able to get overlaid next year. You have to hold them together. And some of these that are, are in better shape, like Long Lane's not in too bad a shape, you know, I'd like to do it to Stone Hill in the next couple of years to keep them in good shape, keep them from getting dried out in the top, keep them from getting potholes and water, the cracks, the water getting down into the base and destroying the base. I mean, all of our roads are built on clay and nothing else.
Do you have any kind of a schedule as to how you'd like to overlay them or should be?
I, I have a schedule five years out, yeah.
Silver Hill, kind of a schedule?
No. Not because I had planned on doing the double oil and chip. I figured that should give us at least another ten years on that road. In the meantime, I was gonna try and start a fund, a separate account, set money aside. You know, million dollar projects, three, four years of road budget.
Well, I guess to try to move off this subject, I'll propose a motion to approve the overlay on Black Creek Road in Open Drive and single layer oil and chip on Long Lane, Orchard, Staver and Wensel Road, but hold off on Silver Hill Road. And, you know, if we, we can still go ahead and do it, just going to be part of the initial co-op. Do not submit that as your, as your qualities. Again, I'm not real comfortable with, with the way this tar and chip works, but to keep moving and move forward, I'll make that as a motion.
I second it.
Okay. Motion was made as I stated, and it was second. Those in favor, say aye.
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 I have to just say no because you put the oil and chip in through the whole thing. You know, if you build it up.
Yeah, I understand. Motion carries.
Oh, no. Another road issue.
Okay.
I had spoke to you about game and school road and the water coming out of the edge. You know why? And the reason to bring it up here is because in front of the board, I feel game and school road below my place, I've never seen it this way. Your dear, well, that was the home farm. I'll be seventy years old. I've never seen the water out to the edge of the road like that. It's, it's close.
That is about there to be.
And I really think the thing we could use between the pipe coming out of the yard above and the pipe short of the driveway, we should pipe that in place like we did along school road and fill it in. Because I'm sure if we pipe in a place, we can control the water route along. We could save the base of our road. We're gonna lose our base. And I'm pretty sure that they're gonna mow it like they did below. We didn't put in the pipe below. My uncle did. I reached in the one figure with pipe.
My mom, we had issues down the road too. I'd like to redo that whole pipe because the water, the pipe's up high. The bottom of the pipe is like level with the surface of the road. And it's, it's old corrugated metal pipe where the joints aren't watertight and the water just seeps out of those pipes, comes out to the edge of the road and the edge of the road is soft down that way. I mean, the whole thing needs redone, the whole way down to the wetlands. And I'm actually called, I wanted to see what we could do about those wetlands. I'm meeting a guy out there, see what our options are and stuff.
So what really created the problem was behind me, back in the sixties, late sixties. The man who built the house, he put in that small pipe in front of the stone house behind it. Yet the pipe under eight ninety-seven is a thirty inch pipe. So you're running a thirty inch pipe toward a pipe that deep. And when I put the pipe aside of my place, I stated, named it the thirty inch. But, and the pipe work down below is wrong. That's too small.
It's a lot of water.
That's why we can't let residents be putting in the pipes and doing the work along the roads. Because it'll cost as much or more to redo it right than if they just left it alone, you know? But one thing that's in our favor, and I would've never believed it if I wouldn't have seen it and lived there. When it used to rain, the water coming off of the fields where Lipper Components is, it used to look like Niagara Falls. And I remember the pipe going through the middle of where the Gaiman's Mennonite School building is today. They had it changed. They talked Pendott to put it on my side. All that water came to the corner. When it would rain, you'd open the front door and the water was right up against. It looked like you were in the middle of a huge river. When Lipper Components was approved and the stormwater facilities, they couldn't, I can't believe how they worked. It caught all that water. Now we have a thirty inch pipe that used to overflow. And now, even in the heaviest rains, there's only that much water that goes through the bottom. And I goes through for several days, don't get me wrong, but stormwater does work. I would've never believed it if I wouldn't have lived there and seen it myself. But something, it'd be nice to pipe. We're gonna lose that road. And I'd like to see whatever it takes to put some kind of pipe. You don't have to put inlet box. You could leave it open. I have mine open between mine and the neighbor's. It was a thirty inch pipe from the ground here, a small. And I always figured if it gives that much water, which it don't, it can come out there and go across in every yard, you know, which it would've been even if it threw his pipe. I'm afraid if you don't leave it open, what's gonna happen is the way that pipe is put in down below, it's only gonna take one stick. There are many trees and that's good to go down there and get caught in one of those joints that isn't together right. And then the leaves come. And it's maybe a plastic bag or something. And pretty soon that pipe's plugged up. Then who has a problem? The property owner or the tar chip. So I would really like to see the board give approval to the road master to see if he could set a pipe between those two and leave it opening in between to get that water back over there toward where that ditch used to be. It is, it is really wet there.
Do you, do you agree with Art?
There is an issue, yeah. I mean, you know, we could, we could pipe the whole thing. I mean, could clean out the ditch too, the swale in between the two pipes and see how that works also. I mean, that'd be the cheap way to go, but still have issues with the existing pipe that's there. It's, it's, I guess it's old corrugated metal pipe. And it's, it's, in the springtime, it never stops running. It's constantly running here. And it daylights into the swale along the road and the whole edge of the road is soft all the way down to the sewer plant, into the wetlands there. And the whole section is just a mess there.
Can you support his idea?
Yeah. Well, he's just saying doing in between those two pipes.
At least do that, but where you, right under the driveway where the pipe is put in by the.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're all gonna run into there.
Well, the sewer runs right down through there. I gotta pop manholes and check the depth and.
And that was a dump.
That went through a dump, right there. So. Well, if you, if you need a board action on it, I have no problem. You've done the roads. You understand it's better than most people. If that's what you recommend.
Well, I'd like to see him figure out what kind of pipe. And maybe in the future, do something, but at least get that part piped there. We gotta get that water away from the road.
I think a ditch would do that too. I mean.
And then it'll come back. But when you clean the ditch, you have very little opportunity to really get in and mow it when it starts to expand its wetness again.
Yeah.
I really believe if it was piped, I know, I'm confident, the property owners will mow it like it moved down the road. And then we have no maintenance over that part of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, that's, yeah, it's, going his idea is fine, but then we still, I mean, eventually we'll have to address the issue lower than that. Yeah, that's.
Okay. Do we have a motion to request the road master follow-up with Arthur's suggestion? I'll make that a motion. I'll make a motion that we authorize the road master to follow up with what Art's suggestions regarding game and school road and the water issue down there.
I second it.
Motion was made in second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Not one thing, you're right on the, right away. That's nothing that we're concerned about here. Because I know.
We'd have to go through special papers.
Right. I'm, I'm just gonna talk to him, let him know what's gonna happen.
They'll be fine.
It's gonna, still have to wait for it to dry out.
Oh, no. Oh, no, that's understood.
I couldn't imagine trying to get in there right now with the backhoe. I don't know if I'd get out.
Well, I, I, if I had to do it, I wouldn't even turn the backhoe with the ditch. I'd do it all.
You'd stake it inside.
No, no. It, it has to dry out. But I don't think it'll completely dry anytime.
It won't. I mean, but it'd be extremely wet here later.
Okay. You have resolution two thousand and eighteen dash three regarding Brecknot's, Brecknot Township's participation in the co-op. Now, you have quantities here. Did that change?
Yeah, just, just make the motion to adopt two thousand and eighteen dash three excluding Silver Hill Road.
Okay.
And then we'll change it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand and eighteen dash three excluding the double tar and chip on Silver Hill Road. And the quantities would be changed to reflect that.
Including two, three, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Including Silver Hill and Bridge Road. Okay. Motion was made. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion was second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just to go out with township engineer?
Yes. You have a copy of my report. On page four, I have thirteen items for you for tonight. I'll try to read those briefly for you. Item number one is a financial security release recommendation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars per my letter of January twenty-fifth. Item two is Maple Ridge North is a financial security release recommendation in the amount of ninety thousand ninety-eight dollars dated February first, two thousand and eighteen. Item three is a financial security recommendation letter to establish the financial security in the amount of twenty-eight hundred and sixty dollars per my letter of January nineteenth. Item four is Lowell Sensing is a final release recommendation letter dated February one in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Item five is the Ambuscade Stormwater Project. That's a financial security release in the amount of six hundred dollars. Item six is the John D. Martin Stormwater Project. Recommended release of financial security in the amount of twenty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Seven is Joseph Good Stormwater Project. We've received a memorandum of understanding and financial security recommendation to establish that amount of three thousand dollars. Item number eight is the Levon Brubaker Stormwater Project. That's received a memorandum of understanding for action. Item nine is the Wilmer Lee Stormwater Management. We've received a memorandum of understanding and a recommendation to establish financial security in the amount of three thousand dollars. Item ten is Nathan Brubaker Land Development. We reviewed as-built plans and issued financial security release in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Item eleven is an extension of time request for Sun Valley Campground Land Development until May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And item twelve and thirteen, the Kevin and Melanie Horning Lot Adon Plan and the Maple Grove Automotive Land Development. Those are both gonna be reviewed by the planning commission in a couple of weeks here. Those are both for memorandum of understandings for action by the board.
Okay. Is there any individual questions on either of them that the board has? If not, I'll make a motion that the board would approve the action as we recommend that by the township engineer, all thirteen items.
I second it.
Motion was made in second. Those in favor, say aye. 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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. You have the SEO's report. There's no comments to that. We'll move on to the zoning officers' reports.
Jerry, there was an additional order on your, at your place there from the zoning officer to add to her.
Oh, just one.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe Levi, do you want to summarize your comments here?
For increasing the height of the accessory buildings?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've had, the zoning hearing board has had, oh, six or seven requests over the last several years for variances from the twenty-foot height allowed for accessory buildings. All requests were in the either Forest Recreation District, Ag One or Ag Two zoning districts. So I'm proposing, I've already had it reviewed by the planning commission, but to increase the height of access, for accessory buildings from twenty feet to twenty-four feet in Ag One, Ag Two, and Forest and Recreational Zoning Districts. These lots are normally larger lots, so property lines often are not, you know, close proximity. Occasionally they may be, but it's a zoning district that is more rural and lots less concentrated. Typically, when there's a frequency of requests for the same thing, why I think it's important to look at, at our zoning text and to consider an amendment too, because it's obviously something that is not really applicable or working for numerous situations. So that's...
The reasons is coming up, discuss the story.
Well, a lot of them, a lot of them are for truck garages or motorhome garages where they have fourteen, fifteen-foot high doors. Until you get an overhead access to go overhead and then a peaked roof line, you're often gonna be really pushing the twenty-foot limit and it's often the, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three feet. So we went, I'm recommending just a little extra, twenty-four feet, to accommodate those situations. We have two more coming up on next Tuesday evening at zoning hearing, two variance requests of the same nature.
Well, the normal procedure may be that we would ask, pass it down.
Yeah, and that's, that's my, that's my request, that you, that you present it to the zoning planning commission for review and for formal recommendation back to the board supervisors. And then obviously, I think it's necessary for a legal counsel to take a look at the language before it would go for adoption. So whether that tonight is a, is a recommendation by the board and sort of, to sort of be proactive and have it prepared possibly for the next supervisors' meeting, I'd like, I'd request consideration of that.
Yeah.
If the present day height is twenty feet, and you wanna make a door fourteen, you've got a larger truck.
I think the trailer height, just to, for information's sake, is thirteen foot six inches. So this is gonna stop at a fourteen-foot door.
Okay. Now, let's say you have to go with a sixteen-foot.
Door?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you need room for the door to go up, so you need a basic.
Right. Couple feet.
At least a foot and a half, two foot.
Now you're talking twenty-four feet. On what side? Now, you're talking twenty-four feet. On what size building?
Four to quarter with sixteen-foot.
What kind of pitch do you end up with?
At four twelve is common.
Yeah, would you end up, depends on the size of the building?
You can put any pitch on, but four is very common. And if you go forty-foot wide on the building, the peak would be, the sixteen-foot wall height, the peak would be right around twenty-three feet.
Yeah, and that's some pretty common requests. Twenty-two, six, twenty-three feet.
Sixteen. But see, he's saying a door sixteen, so you have to go eighteen, see.
Well, if you go sixteen door height, yeah, you'd get eighteen.
So.
Twenty, twenty-four wouldn't work for that.
Well, I think what the dilemma is, you're coming to the zoning hearing board, it's a variance, and they, they not always can't do a hardship, but sometimes they'll do it de minimis. If it's within ten percent, maybe they'll grant it. So, if they're gonna grant it within ten percent, that would give you another two feet. So, technically, they can probably get by. But once you start going over twenty-six feet, then it's not a hardship nor de minimis variance.
Well, that was what I was wondering. Depends how high they go with the door height. Is there enough there, you don't end up with too flat a roof?
Are you questioning whether twenty-four is enough? Is that what you're doing?
Well, that was what I was.
This, this is the recommendation by me. So, if you wanna forward it to the planning commission with a different height, I would say this is your opportunity. You know, I'm asking you to consider it and then recommend the passing to the planning commission. If you wanna change the height, that's no problem. Then we'll process it through the planning commission and have it back up to the board of supervisors.
Dave said, well, that does this kind of work.
I thought Ag was already at heart.
Well, Ag is. But if it's a, if it's a residential use, then it's difficult to give, consider it an Ag building.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, Ag is unlimited height, but accessory building, accessory building for a residence, even if it's a zoning is Ag One or Two and Forest Recreational, why, it's still a residential use.
Yeah. I have a question where you were going with something. It's not, is this considered a text amendment?
Yeah.
Or dimension? It basically doesn't have a text.
We would have to do an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It would have to be advertised and sent to the county.
And then we have to get the county, okay. So, you said something, have it back to this board next month. It's like, I'm, you're, you're.
Well, it doesn't come back to the board supervisor to be forwarded to the planning commission.
Well, that, it can be done that way. Yeah. I mean, it should be done. The township should authorize it to go to the county planning commission. I don't know with the process that you followed in the past, but that's what we recommend for municipalities.
Yeah, usually we waited to hear the planning commission's recommendation before we forward it, because if this board did not like it.
Right, right.
It could've died right there. So, okay. Well, the, so our options tonight are this can die right here, or we can forward it to the planning commission for their evaluation and a formal recommendation back to us.
Yeah. The other option would be to order this height.
I think it should. If, if Ag and.
That's what we're asked in the planning commission to evaluate the height. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, I think it could be forward with comments.
True.
Consider twenty-five or twenty-six, whatever you want, whatever you want that to consider.
Yeah, thank you. Where you can attend the planning commission and express your opinion there. What do you think about height? Should we suggest the height or completely allow the planning commission to come back if they're on evaluation?
Twenty-four foot is not a high when you're constructing a building.
Again, we're talking, we're talking the Ag, the Ag Two, or the Forest Rec. We're not talking about a large accessory building, someone's residential. So, we can make the recommendation to, I mean, we can, we can make the motion to forward this to the planning commission and add the recommendation to follow up.
If we're changing it anyway, we're gonna go in four feet there.
Currently, it's twenty feet. Now, what, some of your, your question about, you know, if the truck is, is higher and stuff. Now, that's the average height that that boat needs. So, sometimes if, if the building is built into a bank, the back can be sixty and the front can be twenty-four, and it would meet our zoning regulations. But a lot of these more economical buildings are put up for storage of trucks and trailers and RVs aren't necessarily built into a bank. They're pretty much ground, ground floor level all the way around. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we forward the recommendations from the zoning officer that the zoning hearing board would evaluate the current maximum height of accessory buildings as stated in this letter. That they would evaluate it, get public input, and then make a formal recommendation back to this board.
You mean planning commission?
Or planning commission, what I said.
You said zoning.
Okay, planning commission. Yes, thank you. And then, is there a second to that?
I second it.
Okay, the motion was second. Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, do we wanna add any, you wanna add a comment that you'd like to see the, possibly twenty-eight feet? No, just let it flow. You can come back to us and we can still change it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Jerry, just a suggestion. You may wanna just allow the PC to go through that process, and then it'll give the board another month to look at it on your own. And then, you know, you'll have a recommendation at that point. If you wanna come back and hash that out, we'll have that recommendation back to you.
Thank you.
Right. And Mike, just so I'm clear, when did, typically, would you want our office then to prepare the text after it comes back from the planning commission? Do you ever go back to the, to the township planning commission with the text or not? You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have. Okay, that's what I.
Once the PC does a recommendation, it goes to the board.
Like an informal.
Once they have that, they're set on the number.
Then our office will prepare the text, right.
And then we'll go back.
When you prepare the text, then it goes to the county.
Right.
That, that, to that point. Okay. But do you go back to the township planning commission with that text?
We do.
Because we, we do that for everyone. I just wanted to.
Yeah, we'll get the text done.
Wanted to make sure it was all the same.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. We have some proposals to replace, replacement windows on the farmhouse. Levi has solicited some quotes, and I would guess everything's fine here. He only got two. Is there a requirement for three?
How, how much are we talking about here?
Sixteen thousand.
Wow.
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, we need three. Three.
He solicited three.
Three.
And only got two.
Okay, well, then it was fine, as long as he solicited three.
Yes.
Yeah.
They did, yes.
So, as long as it's under the, well, he did solicit three.
You're fine, because he did solicit three.
You had, there was, I saw, you had one from CS.
CS Stalford. They, they proposed vinyl windows and the spec was for composite wood.
Is the one you circled your recommendation after talking to these people?
Well, it, the one on the Luke Martin siding exteriors that I have two of them circled, those two on the Renata are all include, the two, the scope of the two circled items are all included in the one price on, from Renata. So, to be equal, to get the equal work, we would need to consider the eleven hundred and fifty for the wood sills, for the sills, and then the type of windows. He proposed numerous windows types, and so that's why the sills were placed separately. So, it would be eleven fifty plus the sixty-nine fifty, or if you go to Renata, it would be the eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. As I stated in my letter to you, the, the windows from the Luke Martin siding exteriors are a little less expensive, but they are fiberglass, composite fiberglass versus composite wood. To me, I don't know whether that's equal. The spec was for composite wood, so if we, if the board thinks that, that composite wood is a higher quality, which is less than a thousand dollars higher, I think we would have, we would be justified to award the bid to Renata based on that, that they's prices specifications thoroughly.
I want to.
Jerry, I have a question. Can you give us an estimate of how much money's been invested in this house to date?
It is around thirty-five thousand.
Totally. That includes the electric, the foundation, the heating.
No, well, it's just, it's basically heating and air conditioning and roof.
It's thirty-five to date.
Around that, yeah.
And you'll spend another eighteen over this.
Yes. It won't stop there.
What is, what is the final estimate?
We don't know yet. You know, this is a work in progress, and the opinion is that it's necessary money spent to preserve the house, the character of the house, and to keep that, you know, to keep it from deteriorating.
Well, I said my opinion on the fiberglass versus the composite, what are yours?
Is this property historically registered or is it going to be?
I don't, what is the date, what is the date still on?
Seventeen ninety-one.
Seventeen ninety-one.
Because if you're going that route, then you'd only have maybe a couple of sawages directions, knowing it would be further from measures, but you're gonna have to along that process, I would think.
Another question would be, when the house has all this work done, what's the township gonna do with it? Is it gonna be rented for somebody? Is it gonna be used as an advanced place maybe or something?
My idea of what's gonna happen to it is that's why we have a park and rec board for them to come up.
They gotta come up with something.
Hopefully, they can come up with something.
As long as there's some kind of really nice use for it, for the township, that would be great.
I have no idea what to use it for. Go with the best.
Yeah, like Levi said, at this point, we're just trying to stabilize the house and make it decent to last for another hundred years.
But if you're gonna go that next step or start with a registry, why, make a difference in what you put back in it to get that.
The, Cindy's, Cindy's point, I do know that Strasburg Borough has a historic district. They allow composite wood or wooden windows, you know, with their, with their guidelines for restoration. I, my impression is they do not allow fiberglass. From my perspective, there's the quality, I don't see any difference in the quality and such. So, it's really a matter of whether the, the board wants to pursue the historical preservation. That adds limits to what can be done, and, yeah, I'm not sure. We put heating and air conditioning in. Has that already damaged the possibility of getting on historic registry? I don't know. But.
I mean, I, I don't think so, simply because if you go to the DuPont section, they do that simply to preserve the structure anyway. But it might be worth just taking a moment to look into something that they're gonna do that would be, it's gonna be.
So, Levi, you're saying the composite wood would work for restoring it for historical?
Well, it doesn't, according to Strasburg Borough's guidelines.
Oh, you say it does not?
It does.
It does.
It does, according to Strasburg Borough's guidelines. Yeah, it doesn't, I don't think it does everywhere that would act good with. But one, one thing I was looking at was, I'm up with a finished product, real old paint.
We can restore and preserve it as a historical building within our township, but not necessarily need the natural or state right, rest, be involved. Though, here and that, I, I just the composite, it seems like the composite windows were more in line with actually the better.
I don't know a whole lot about composite. It's not something we ever use, but the fiber glass, I don't have a problem with. But from the literature that I've seen on it, Levi had sent out, the composite looked like a regular window. But I don't have any experience with it.
Are we up against a time restraint here? Is this something?
No, it's, it's, it's not time restraint. I don't know how, how long the bid would be for. You know, a lot of bids are only thirty days. I don't, you know, I imagine the proposal would be good for another month, but next month, I'm not gonna be here to make this decision.
They, they do say thirty days from the date.
Yeah.
What do you think, Levi? I don't know if putting off thirty days is gonna change a whole lot. What I'm hearing and sensing is maybe, I mean, Levi originally requested to inspect out the composite wood windows, and that's, that's what one of them provided, and the other two was trying to come up with something close to that. I've never put in a fiberglass window. I've never put in these composite windows. I've only ever done vinyl. And that's all I know. So, I don't know anything about the structure of the area. Maybe we need the spec sheets on that window. I think I've seen that.
Yeah, I had, I give you information. Did you go, I'm not sure what's in the package, but I'd send information to you guys.
It was before this one.
Before this one?
Yeah, it was before this one.
About seven hundred dollar difference between the composite being seven dollars.
That's not a lot.
That's right, yeah.
It's not a lot.
Are you good with that?
I don't think it, from what I saw in the literature, like I said, I've never used composite, but this one is a really good window.
Will you deal with composite? Okay. Make a motion and let's. And that was Roda, Rodana?
Renata.
Make a motion that we deal with the Renata proposal in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. It was second. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the park and rec. They're minutes from their January meeting. Does anyone wanna add or discuss any of it?
At what point have we been over the diamond type, that is, that is?
Springtime meeting, I guess. And I had, I had updated, like, maybe, did they update the price? I had gave them the new price of what it costs now versus.
Six twenty-five.
It has. I, that's not right, I had given them a new price.
What, six twenty-five at the period?
Three years ago?
Three years ago.
Well, so how long ahead of schedule is it?
I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah, Chester, it's not more.
Well, it looks like they're working through some things, so... Just let them continue on.
The fencing at the hockey, did you get in contact with some of the people in the hockey?
I did.
That suited them?
What, what's that?
That it suited them to go with this type of fencing?
Uh, you know, chain link works okay, you know, they, the thing they argued with is, they say when people go to check in the fence, depending where it's at, if you hit, if you hit the pole, it's very, it's not forgiving, and if you hit in between the poles, then it, you know, it doesn't hurt as much. Where, you know, they would prefer to see the hockey boards, you know, put up, with chain link fence on top. Actually, I've seen some courts, I had looked at quite a few different courts throughout Lancaster County, and, you know, when you put the hockey boards up, you could actually just put fence on the end so that if they overshoot the goal, the ball doesn't go out of the court. But the, you know, boards still asking me to get more pricing on fencing and boards, and I think I've called just about everybody I can, and some people got back to me, some people didn't, I don't know why. I was pleading with some fence companies to give me estimates, and they never gave them to me, so I don't know what the deal was there, but I don't know what they're going to decide, but I had told the park board that the hockey league would prefer to see hockey boards versus chain link fence.
Yeah, I know.
How high are those boards?
Uh, right around four feet. And you can get different boards, you can get boards, basically where you would still have to put in a chain link fence, and the boards would just mount right to the fence, or you can get boards that would stand on their own and just have fence on the ends. But I guess, I don't know, I guess there hasn't been in there what the estimates were, but the boards are like, it's like sixty grand.
Probably have boards, and they long for months on the end, this group puts a lot of money into running them. They really do, it's a group they have every Sunday, they have them running for a long time, they do spring and fall.
It sounds that they're requesting it, we ought to be doing something. Yeah, would you go to the park and rec meetings?
I do.
Oh, Levi. The adult fitness equipment.
They, that's still, I wasn't at the last meeting, I don't even know if that was talked about. I don't think Amanda was there either, was she?
I mean, that's, they didn't discuss where it would be placed, they was talking about along the trail, it was a possibility, exercise stations, so to speak. It's, it's different, different stations that have different exercises.
Denver Park has something very similar on their walking trail.
And some of them are really very basic pieces of equipment. You're not talking about treadmills or bicycle, you know, exercise bicycles, anything like that, it's...
Chain on bar, the, the dough bars, and balance beam, and...
It's different.
Sit up, like plank or whatever.
Okay, stone mason, stone leader. We can build things that they have to jump over or crawl under, a lot cheaper, I'm sure, but...
I, I was just, the aluminum planks were damaged?
Yes, we got them replaced.
Were they bad?
Not, not, not real bad, they were scratched, and they told me, they said, hey, any of them come down and scratched or anything, they let them know, and there were five of them that were, I'm assuming when the forklift went to pick them up or whatever, loading them onto the truck, and, and they asked me to send pictures, and before I knew it, we had five new planks sent out, no questions asked.
And you had to return the others?
Nope, we still have the others.
You still have the others?
Yeah.
Well, they weren't going to ask for them back?
No.
They don't want them back.
What? They don't want to pay the shit, they don't want any of them.
Huh?
Are they, are they installed? Did you install them already?
Not yet, no, we, we want to take off the wood on the cinder blocks that are over there, and then we want to paint them while the wood's off, it'd be a lot easier to paint them, and then we can mount the aluminum planks on top.
How many was there?
Oof, thirty-four?
Oh, was there that many?
Thirty-four sixteen footers, so two per row.
Okay. Okay, I think the motion to approve your reports.
Make the motion that we approve the roadmaster, engineer, SEO, zoning, parking record, as presented.
Okay. We approve the reports, it was second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have anything to...
No, I don't, just agenda items.
Great. We're going to, nothing in old business, are we going to new business? We need to approve the real estate tax duplicate?
I make a motion that we approve the township real estate tax duplicate in the, on the two thousand seven hundred and ninety total accounts, in the base amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents to be presented to the tax collector.
Great. Make a motion to approve the tax duplicate, which means these are delinquent accounts?
No, this is for the new, for two thousand eighteen.
Okay, okay. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was to approve the tax duplicate, it was second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we need to approve the streetlight.
Duplicate?
Yep.
Make a motion that we approve the streetlight tax duplicate on six hundred and forty-two accounts, in the base total amount of fifty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents to be presented to the tax collector.
Okay, the motion was made on the streetlight tax duplicate, and was second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Next month, I will have some additional streetlights, I'm still working with PP&L on an issue in the Maple Ridge development and Meadows Phase Three that I'm trying to work out with them, so there will be some additional.
We have the Bowman'sville Fire Company's activity list to be approved, so they will be covered under workers' column.
I make a motion that we approve the Bowman'sville Fire Company activity list as presented in the packet for the year twenty eighteen.
Okay, the motion was made to approve their list as it is, it was second, those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next you have a resolution number two thousand eighteen dash four, which I will refrain from the motion for any voting on this one, it is a resolution for the deputy tax collector.
I make a motion to appoint Jerry Long as deputy tax collector of Bretonna Township, which is resolution twenty-eight twenty-four, as presented in the packet.
Now, second. Okay, motion was made in second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a resolution for records retention, which is Carol wants to clean up a little bit and get rid of some old records, and she has them listed, the ones she wants to get rid of.
And it's in accordance with a previous resolution that we adopted back in two thousand eleven, and accordance with the municipal records manual, as far as what we keep them on. A lot of these records, even though the paper copies are gone, we have some of these actually scanned, so.
These are all ones that you secretly get rid of?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Do you want to make that motion?
I make the motion, hmm, how long is this? We have a resolution to throw away?
Yes, disposal.
Disposal of these records listed as presented in the packet.
Okay, the motion was made to approve resolution number two thousand eighteen dash five, and it was second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, Levi has presented a proposed complaint form, trying to standardize the method of which complaints come into the township concerning zoning code issues. I think he's always challenged with how serious the people are to be in there, making their complaint, but they're, and he wants to document this a little better. We can do it by motion, or we can just look at and say it's good, it's good to go, or any other comments you might have, when the, he'd like to use this new form.
There is one in place now, it's just not very, there's not much to it.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the new complaint form that Zanocca has prepared, and that we approve it for use in the township.
I second.
Okay, the motion was made in second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have another request for zoning tax choice, zoning amendment, and it's being presented, is anyone here to present it? Okay, basically, it's, who's the solicitor that's working on this?
Susan Buckland.
Okay. The board has been requested to look at the, under farm support business, the area of storage is limited to like twenty-five hundred square feet, which seems to be normal for a welding shop, or a harness shop, or a small engine repair shop. Again, we're talking about farm support business, there's other criteria that has to be met to meet the farm support business, but in these, storage that is permitted, say, is I think it was maximum twenty-five hundred square feet. We have someone who works on large farm equipment, large farm equipment, like combines, and harvesters, and large tractors, and existing square foot that is permitted would be like maybe four pieces of equipment, so we're being requested to consider expanding that, that the stor, the storage area for large farm equipment and repairs for a family support business would be enlarged to as much as possibly an acre, if the farm is, say, thirty acres or more. Now, again, there's a, we've been presented with a model ordinance that would explain that. I think they have some valid points that they're requesting, and I think we should possibly get forward to the planning commission for their evaluation, and make recommendations back to the board. And we can do that and add comments, or we can do it as it is, or we can, it can die right now.
I think maybe you want to send it to the planning commission without comments right now, because some of the comments I have, I'm sure, they're not be favorable, I'll be able to board.
It's fine. Will you make that as a motion? Yes.
Just one comment.
Yeah.
An acre is forty-three thousand square feet?
Yeah.
That's quite a bit from twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it is, and that's, that's, they'll have the...
It could be a really huge building, right?
No, when, it's basically, they're talking pretty much outside storage. See, they're allowed, I think it's five thousand square foot of shop, building, and then they're allowed twenty-five hundred outside or partially enclosed or partially covered storage, and so they're requesting because of their unique situation. I think, well, I don't want to take away from them, they obviously have some legitimate complaint, but whether or not it's an acre or whatever, I think they need to justify. So will you make that as a motion?
Yes.
So Arthur made a motion, we forward to the planning commission without comment, let them evaluate and...
Jerry?
Yeah.
Just one thing the planning commission should consider is obviously with fire suppression with that large size of a building.
Again, it's not a building.
Or outside, just to keep that in some consideration there.
The way...
I think we would still have to store the fence, the screen, and the work. Hold on, a fire, accumulation, depends how much stuff's there, and how easy it is to get in and out, and what you have to do, I could see the...
Yeah, yeah. Well, there was a motion, I'll second it. Let this be forward to the planning commission, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we will have an executive session immediately after this meeting to discuss possible litigation, so as soon as the meeting is adjourned, we will be moving to a private room. Did you want to say something?
No.
Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
Did he want to speak?
He's here for a scout project, and he's able to experience the native and talk to a lot of the sort of...
Oh, he can call, all right, cool.
Not to put him on the spot, but...
Yeah. It's all good.
Part of being a scout.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion that we adjourn at what is that?
Well, that time's not right.
Eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven? Yes. And it was second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.